All right, good morning, everybody. I'll call the board of supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, October 2nd. I can't believe it's October. And ask if everybody please join the board as we honor American Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it should be a fairly light agenda today, but we'll get right to it. I do need to note that our partner Marty Chitty is representing us with a delegation that has gone back to Bloomington, Indiana on an inner-city trip. This is the third one we've done. We've been to Manhattan, Kansas, Columbia, Missouri, and now Bloomington. And it's always a great opportunity just to see how others are doing and how they're addressing some of the issues that we face today. So we'll be excited to get Marty back and see what he learned on that trip. First item on our agenda is public comment. Number one, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on really anything you want to comment on. Anybody wishing to do so, come right up. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to Consideration of Proclamation for Manufacturing Day, October 5th. We've got John, Drew, and Dustin here. Who wants to come up and banter with me?
We need to get a third seat. It's like we have people out there a lot.
So when I got here, so just, we gotta like that. When I got here, we didn't have this desk. We had that podium. And anybody who wished to speak, you're in this, Loris, anybody who wished to speak had to go stand at the podium with their back to the screen. And I got here and I said, well, why are we so uninviting? Why are we asking people? And so we put this in, and maybe we do need to expand it. It's great that we got this many people coming to talk to us. Drew, you want to start us?
Oh, yeah, sure. We appreciate the board taking the time this morning to consider the proclamation for Manufacturing Day on October 5th of this year. This is the first time we've really done anything big for Manufacturing Day, and I think it's for good reason. As you all saw, a week and a half ago on September 21st, we had three projects, a total of five, on the Iowa Economic Development Authority Board of Directors meeting agenda. We had MHEB for about a $7.5 million investment. We had BURF here in Nevada, BURF Hormel for $150 million. And then we had 3M and Ames for about a $30 million project, a total of $186 million in capital investment and about 330 jobs. And the big thing is those are all manufacturers. And we're all seeing them grow. And we're not only seeing those, it's also growth in most of the companies. We're also seeing others continue to just grow and hire in their existing spaces. And some of them are already doing, and others are just doing insurance expansions that no one really knows about. Everyone is growing though, and that's the important thing. And we're actually, with a 1.7% unemployment rate, still able to hire the people that they need largely due to the board's support of our workforce solutions program and the good work of Brendan, our team, and our office. Those are things that we've really been able to impact with over 100 employees hiring another couple manufacturers just this year.
And so as we talk about the job growth, Drew, I think I saw a report that came out that said Story County had the fastest wage growth in the state of Iowa over the last year. Are you familiar with that report?
I'm not familiar with the exact numbers, but yes, I do recall that that pay or plans.
Okay.
Seven percent.
I mean, dramatic. And the only thing I have to attribute it to is the low unemployment rate, and we'll continue to add jobs. And so there's a little competition to hire good people, which would mean the wages would go up. It makes sense to me.
Yeah, very much so. When I was still doing the business extension expansion, Brendan has now taken that over a month ago. That was one of the things we'd heard, is that the wages had to be so competitive just to maintain people. Because there's other, if you weren't paying them and you weren't showing them that you needed them or you valued them in that regard, they would go somewhere else. And that was the thing, that the wages are becoming extremely competitive. And that's a good thing, because others are coming to raise their wages, raise their benefits, to really be able to compete for that tower because it is such a tight labor market. So we are seeing really strong wage growth as a result.
Absolutely. And I'm really excited, I mean, you hit on this point. I'm really excited that true kind of old-school manufacturing jobs that we're adding, those, I mean, you think of Ames and Story County, yeah, we add the tech jobs. You see the work heaves of the world, and we add the research jobs and those kind of things. But to see the true hardcore manufacturing jobs really making strides in Story County, that's really exciting to me.
It really is. And the really exciting piece too is, like I said, we had those three projects on the agenda last month in the September board packet for IBA. But we know there's other big things in the hopper. In the next 18 months, we're going to see some other big projects kind of matriculate a little bit out and kind of bring those forward. And those are going to be really exciting for agents as well, that'll bring some more good employment opportunities in the manufacturing sector of Story County. So the big thing is, is obviously, they just need to prepare, address those workforce issues, addressing housing issues that we're having, things like that. Those are things that we're really going to have to plan forward for and really look at, because those are going to be things that are going to be very impactful as we look to add these employees and help these employers retain and attract employees.
Perfect. Loris, anything before we read in the resolution?
I just want to note that I am not going to edit any of the language here. I'm shocked, okay? Because it is an exceptional time. So I'll add stand a couple of superlatives in here.
I love the superlatives.
Yes, I know. Some of them aren't quantifiable. But anyway, so today, I would move that we approve this, and then you would read it in.
All right. And I'll second, and let's read it in, so we know what we just moved and seconded. Whereas, the Story County Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of manufacturing to our local, state, and global economy. And whereas, advanced manufacturing is the number-one business sector in Iowa, representing more than 17.8% of the state's GDP, as evidenced by more than 6,000 manufacturers employing over 213,000 Iowans, or 14% of the state's total workforce. And whereas, Story County's manufacturers pay a significant amount of property tax and user fees, providing outstanding employment opportunities with both high wages and great benefits, and generate exceptional annual earnings, allowing them to be an economic development driver in the community. And whereas, the manufacturing industry employs over 9,500 individuals throughout Story County, with an average annual earnings of $59,506, thereby positively contributing to the prosperity throughout the community. And whereas, the Story County Board of Supervisors routinely sees the positive contributions of our local manufacturers and appreciates and thanks them for continued commitment to the communities and clientele they serve. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Story County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim, October 5th, 2018, is Manufacturing Day, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing the critical role manufacturing plays in our local, state, and global economy. We have a motion, we have a second. Dustin, Drew, anything to add?
I would ask if we could take a photo before promotion on Friday.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Be glad to do that. Loris, anything else?
Nothing.
All right. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It is, October 5th is Manufacturing Day in Story County. Let's take the photo. You want to do it up here? So you don't have to watch.
No, that's okay.
All right. Thank you.
So I went online and actually looked up, it's National Manufacturing Day.
Yeah, I think it's National Association of Manufacturers.
You got this one?
I heard that very intriguing, the chair shook the first.
Look at this, right? Isn't it great?
I guess so. What about the navy blue in the middle? How's that? Yeah.
So the half is just holes. I should say holes.
Big butt.
I think it's the big butt.
Oh, it's in the middle. It's worn down this morning. Okay.
One, two, three.
John, is this what wedding day is like when you just have to smile? John, is this what wedding day is like when you just have to smile?
Yeah.
Jack, you're already just sat there, wedding day, July 5th. What we did, my middle son. See you guys.
I'm at the garden. I'll be good.
Absolutely. See you guys. You're gonna have a great day.
Yes, yeah. That was the one. I will get back to you. Superbright, great company.
I'll be here for the rest of the meeting.
I don't know whether I would be.
All right. Next item is Consideration of Healthiest State Annual Walk Proclamation. We have anybody to walk us through this one, so Loris, how about if I read it in real quick, and then we'll see what they got.
Sure.
Whereas, the Healthiest State Initiative has set an ambitious goal for Iowa to become the healthiest state in the nation. And whereas, the Healthiest State Initiative aims to do this by improving the physical, social, and emotional well-being of Iowans. And whereas, walking helps to manage weight, improve strength, and physical fitness. And whereas, group walking allows for improving social and emotional well-being by providing support and connection. And whereas, walking 30 minutes a day can improve your overall health as we strive to become the healthiest state in the nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, Story County, Iowa, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens, and set seal hereto, that October 3rd, 2018, is Healthiest State Annual Walk Day in Story County, Iowa. All citizens are encouraged to join us for a walk for 30 minutes and improve their physical, social, and emotional health.
I have no comments, other than I believe in this, and I would make a motion to approve.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Olson.
Aye.
Sanders. Aye. I want to say Chitty. I was waiting for Chitty to answer. So it is, October 3rd is Healthiest State Annual Walk Day in Story County. Go for a walk. Next is Consideration of Minutes.
So move as presented?
I'll second. Olson.
Aye.
Chitty, not here. Sanders. How about the routine we get into? That's outstanding. Sanders, aye. Personnel actions, as listed.
I move, we approve as listed.
And I'll second. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims for October 4th.
Move as presented?
And I'll second. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. No public hearing items. Additional items, discussion and consider.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
We have one item. Oh, three. Sorry. Move as presented.
And I'll second. Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. Now, no public hearing items. Additional items, we are going to discuss and consider the purchase of seven new vehicles as budgeted from Cyrus Ford for the sheriff. Leanne, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, back on September 18th, the board approved that we purchased seven vehicles through Ames Ford Lincoln. However, last week, I received notice from Ames Ford that they cannot meet the required specifications of getting 2019 Ford Explorers. And so I am asking that we move forward with the purchase with Cyrus Ford, who assures me that we can get the 2019s. Thus, in the long run, saving a substantial amount of money, not only will the difference of the vehicles be anywhere from $6,000 more per vehicle, we don't know with body style changes, if our equipment will transfer over and potentially we'd have to buy all new cages and everything else. The increase in the cost is $6,551.44 for the purchase, but like I said, I think that's going to be substantially lower than what we're going to see over the 2024.
Okay, so simply a change in where we're buying them, still approving what we're buying, spending a little more to go ahead and get them, but less than we would spend every way.
Correct.
Okay. Loris, questions or comments?
None, other than I know that Ames Ford in the past has wanted to be able to bid and, you know, and provide, but it's unfortunate this isn't the opportunity for them. So I'm fine with it.
Well, they did bid, but they can't follow through with the order yet, so.
So that's my comment.
Okay, you ready to make a motion?
Yes, I am. I move that we allow the purchase of seven new vehicles for the Story County Sheriff's Office from Cyrus Ford for $182,377.
And I'll second, and just note, so for anybody paying attention, this is a change from what we approved back on September 18th, not in vehicles, it's a change in who we're buying them from and how much ultimately we're spending for those vehicles.
Correct.
Good? Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thanks. Have a great day.
You too.
No agency reports, departmental reports. Planning and development is with us today. Garrett Moore.
Good morning. Gary. Okay, this is third quarter report. We're going to be looking at zoning permit data, developing application information, information on current and future projects, a little information on work program items, and then special projects. First one is the zoning permit data. You can see we're down a little bit, but we're within the zone of the previous two years, down five from last year's third quarter, down three from 2016. I want to thank Amelia for putting a lot of this information together. She does a great job for us. I asked her to kind of dig into some of the details to share with you. With regard to zoning permits, this third quarter, we have 11 accessory structures, eight single-family dwelling additions, 10 of those were new construction, and then of the three, that represented 67% of the total of 42. Valuation information, you can see we're down a little bit. It really comes to, or points to, really a few dwellings. Again, Amelia provided some details. In 2018, the average dwelling value was a little over $220,000. In 2017, it was up over $280,000. And in 2016, it was just under $297,000. So in 2018, this quarter, we only had two houses, permits that were over $300,000 in value. In 2017, we had seven that were over $300,000 in value. And then in 2016, it was a big year. One was over $500,000 in value, one was over $750,000, so then we had four that were over $300,000.
Yeah, so we're actually building more homes at more reasonable prices now, right?
Right. The overall map, above this map, shows you the activity. As what we see most quarters is a lot of activity between Ames and Gilbert. However, we do have a lot of activity between Ames and Maxwell, also between Kelly and Hudson, and Colo and Collins. Green represents the accessory structures. We see quite a few between Gilbert and Ames, a few between Nevada and Maxwell. The red represents commercial projects. We have a few of those. The yellow represents the single-family dwellings. So they're scattered throughout primarily between Gilbert, Ames, but there's a few between Nevada and Maxwell. And then single-family additions are the brown, orange color, and they're pretty much spread throughout. Development permit applications, we're down a little bit, but within the range of the previous two years' third quarter. We had a total of nine. The biggest category was subdivisions, and we track conditional use permits, subdivisions, rezoning requests, site plans for commercial uses, variances, vacations, ordinances, and road renewals. We're working on a four or five ordinance amendments right now. Third-quarter cases, these are the things that were before our department and went on to the planning and zoning commission, the board, and the board adjustment, Gilbert Wastewater Treatment Plant project update. We had four residential parcel subdivisions that were reviewed, the Finch rezoning request, Williams variance, property in Farnold. We looked at the East Lincoln Way road renewing for the portion of the road that was in the unincorporated area of the county. And then the Cowsor Site Development Plan is west of Nevada on West 18th Street. These are some things that we're working on now, reviewing. Some of these things will likely be addressed in the fourth quarter. Manoa Borrow Pit, they are located at 245th Street, east side of I-35. They're asking for an extension of off the grain that we had. They need some sand to shore up their cranes, to set those horizontal members. You probably drove by and seen the installation of those horizontal pieces. Pleasant Grove Church, they are adding an accessory structure and some parking on their property, and they have a lease for some new parking itself. Next Air Energy Wind, we told you about, they pushed their project to November. They want to upgrade like 100 of their units.
Right, not just the blades though, right? Blades and.
And the gear housing.
Yeah.
And they do it all at the same time.
How much do you know about the gear housing? Because what I'm hearing about that is fascinating.
I just know that they're going to bring in the entire hub.
Yeah.
And replace the existing hub.
Yeah, so as I understand it, the original, so this was one of the first big wind farms in, well, definitely in Iowa, but in America really, when they came in. And they used the generators out of old locomotives originally. And now the industry has advanced to the point, and I hate to put a number on it, but I mean, it's multiples in terms of efficiency, how much more efficient these are going to be, and how much more power they're going to be able to generate from the same wind. It's fascinating to watch this industry grow.
So we're going to be seeing that in November. That'll be before, ultimately, before the board adjustment.
I just had a question. Is it possible that when they start doing this, that they would give a tour or something like that?
Yeah, so I don't know how readily they're going to want us around when they're actually doing some of the construction, but I think it's absolutely worth our time to reach out and see if we can just get a briefing, even if it's not a tour, a briefing of what's happening and what kind of impact they expect it to have, and try to get some sample.
You're talking about before they actually start?
Yeah, I don't think it factors, I don't think we're asking to approve or anything like that. I think just for information and get the word out in the public.
That's a good idea.
That's exactly. I'm just interested.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Manant Stockpiling, CUP, they're located currently, South Dayton, they've got their materials there, their crushing operations, their asphalt and batch plant, they have requested an extension indefinitely to be there permanently. We reached out to the planning and housing department with Ames, they're adjacent to the Ames Corporate Limits, had some discussions about the James River Fran, really kind of the vision for that area. So we're in the process of considering a request to stay there, that used to stay there permanently. This is something that will ultimately end up before that board adjustment.
Well, now, so last time I heard, they had 75 years of material to pull out there, right?
This would be to the west of that, this is South Dayton, southwest corner of 30 and Dayton.
Yeah, right there.
And the CUP is a temporary use that expires again this year. They want to stay there, they've acquired some of that land, and they want to stay there permanently and do that.
Yeah, so I've been asking for, I've been asking to see if they would have any interest in an option on that ground, because the reality is, at some point in the future, they're going to be done with that ground. That's the really low ground, it's, you know, it's.
In the floodplain.
It's in the floodplain, it's between I-35 and the Scump River. I believe that that is ultimate, and this is way after all of us are done, right? But ultimately, that's another Ada Hayden-esque kind of place that helps to tie things together. And if you'll recall on Ada Hayden, that went from the industrial site to private developers, and then the public had to come back in and try to, can you imagine what Ada Hayden would look like if they hadn't pulled that back into the public? And I just don't want to play with that at all. And so I'm really interested, Jerry, as you work through the CUP, and I understand it goes to the board of adjustment, not the board of supervisors, but I'm really interested, they say indefinitely, but what is their expectation? Because like I say, I'm here in 75 years, that they expect to be pulling materials out of there.
Yeah, and again, this is the site, southwest corner of Highway 30 and South Dayton. They're using it for stockpiling of the material that they're giving for the freeway, I-35. I think they would like this to be their location for storing their materials and to have their, they have a batch plant and a concrete plant there, and to do their crushing, which then they do that like once a year for like a two-week period. I think there's some, like, to the east, there's some interest in doing other types of uses, their own properties that are owned by other people. More entertainment, hotel-type situation, but with the floodplain, there's some really hard decisions that have to be made.
Well, the, absolutely. Not considering the stockpile, but the borrow pit that they have, which is full of water, right? We're never going to build anything there. I mean, it's a question of ultimately what that's going to become.
Right, and that's, there's information in our C2C line about, you know, making that a long-term recreation use to benefit the general public.
Okay.
Dog breeding, boarding, we've got two conditional use permits. We're waiting to reinstitute the language, it was accidentally taken out of our ordinance. And so we've got one for breeding, one for boarding, that we're going to be considering. The, so we've got two residential parcel subdivisions, a request to vacate part of our road right of way, 199th Street, the residential subdivision to the northwest, Northwood Heights, second addition, privately-owned streets. Ryan was here at planning and turn, did a lot of work on looking at all our subdivisions, so a lot of that data has been collected. We pulled the resolutions that were approved for those subdivisions. So the goal is to try to figure out which ones of those are actually, those roads are publicly dedicated to public use, trying to capture also like existing signage situations. Then eventually, we'll be going to the planning and zoning commission, and the board of supervisors on what we find, and then try to figure out what the next step.
And what kind of timeframe should you see? So, I mean, to boil it down, right, we've got what in essence are private drives, private roads, that are signed like they're public roads, that don't have traffic enforcement sign. I mean, it just creates kind of a tough situation in multiple spots.
This year, we'd like to have at least what we found, and then.
Figure out what we're going to.
Come with some information, maybe recommendations, maybe one or two free things that we can do going forward.
Okay.
This year's.
And the two parcel subdivisions, how large are those that we're talking about? I mean, you know, are we splitting the property? Are we, is it multiple homes? What are we talking about?
Gilbert is, I think it's like a 10 or 12-acre parcel that they're proposing to division on. Eagle Land, that's the one that was 500 Avenue, West Ames. It was a part of that change from Ames for the Frankland Land Use Amendment. So that's, it's the north portion of that is what we're looking at. And so it's like two lots.
Yeah, but multiple lots on that Gilbert, that 12 acres.
Well, it would be just two lots, so.
In Gilbert?
Yeah, just residential parcel subdivisions.
You said there are two dog facilities now, so the one is airing, and then the other one is a what, a boarding, or?
Yeah, it's a, it'd be like a daycare.
Oh, daycare, okay, got it.
Primarily money through Friday, but they don't offer weekends. And this one is in relatively close proximity to existing dwellings. So we had conception review, and talked about where a previous regulation was, and then talked also about the amendment that, you know, that we went through with animal control. Talked a lot about reaching out to the neighbors of plans before they actually contact us. Sometimes they're better received than if they wait until they hear from us, too, and notice what the set's, so. They're really good conception review.
Thank you.
Ninety-one evaluation site assessment, that's part of our work program. Ryan, the U-turn, did a lot of work on that, spent quite a few weeks on that. And it's interesting, though, that there's, we found out that there's only six counties that have a land evaluation, which the site assessment, and one of those decided to stop using it. We went to the planning and zoning commission with like what our process is to do an application review, which I think for the most part, they found that pretty interesting. There's interest from some of the members to be able to provide information more quickly and more quicker, have it more readily available. The process is somewhat cumbersome, and it's that way because not only are you looking at just that property, you're looking at the surrounding areas. And as areas change, the point values change. So. So, ultimately, it might end up being a situation where we, you know, if we want to continue with what we're doing, that be more automated. For me to do an evaluation, it, it takes me a lot longer than like the planning staff that do it more frequently than I do.
I have a question about what you just said, um, because the lease I always understood was a tool for us to assure that we weren't taking high-quality agricultural land, um, out of production, okay?
That's the goal.
Okay, so then you just said that the storing changes, is that as, as like subdivisions get built nearby or annexation occurs then?
Right, as land uses change, it affects the, you know, the scoring that you provide. I think we asked like ten or twelve questions. We go through a somewhat scientific slash subjective process, and our goal is to take out the subjectivity to make it more science-based. And every time we have one that's close on the fence, we always have the other planner run through it, and they don't share what their scores are that they found to, to just compare. But like, uh, Ryan spent a lot of time with Black Hawk County and Lynn County, they provided a lot of information, uh, with the review that we're doing. And Lynn County has a system that they call minimum level of service, which is like pre-test before they do a land evaluation site assessment. And if the property doesn't meet this pre-test, the minimum level of service, it doesn't even do, they don't even do the land evaluation assessment. So, with this first, uh, test, they're looking at distance to a, a CAFO, you know, how many hard, uh, surface roads are there within close proximity, what's the distance to the fire station, that kind of thing. And then, um, he thought that the Black Hawk County process was very simple, had questions that the staff, cause these are all administered by county departments, that the questions were very simple and straightforward, and it was pretty easy to assign the company that just, but.
Can you be bringing this forward to us again when all three of us are here? Cause I'm sure this is something.
Yeah, this is not a decision point, this is something that's moving through, uh, well, you presented it to planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
You presented the concept.
Yeah.
Now you're studying.
Yeah, we provided the, the, uh, review that we did, and we also went through the actual review process, and we showed them, you know, the questions that we asked, we actually gave them an example, a real life example of our request. That's something that we certainly can do with the board too. You know, one of the things that we're thinking about, like, next step is maybe going to Iowa State and seeing if there's interest with like the, uh, grad department, um, in assisting us, you know, with the next steps. And, um, so, we'll be working likely with Iowa State.
Sorry for the interruptions, we're testing panic buttons right now. We're good, Aaron?
Yeah.
We're good.
Just a test.
Just a test.
But anyway, I was just talking about, like, we're, we're thinking about working with Iowa State, sharing with them what we've learned so far, um, either one or two grad students or a class, and just see what kind of information they can provide. But this is an ongoing discussion. As I mentioned, we're working on several ordinances, two of them access and dog cattle are before the planning and zoning commission's hearing, so we're looking for action tomorrow. We've got also three additional that we're gonna be discussing, these have all been before the planning and zoning commission at least once, transportation impact analysis, home business requirements, and cabins. Transportation impact, again, we're trying to determine, you know, what the impact of development is, not only just this development that's proposed, but how it relates to other existing developments, um, try to figure out what the counts are during peak times, have threshold numbers by which we would require the applicant's engineer to provide like a study and analysis, uh, to get to whether or not improvements need to be made to county roads, intersections, and then ultimately, you know, what costs there would be and who pays for that. So, there's controls built into the language with, um, you know, the ability of the county engineer and the board to require or not require certain things. Home businesses, uh, again, like I said, we've been before the planning and zoning commission, uh, we're seeing some concerns with regards to compliance with current ordinance. Had a lot of discussion about the fact that this ordinance, it's a good ordinance, but it does not provide, uh, ways for businesses that want to expand or need to expand, uh, to transition from their current home base to another location that's zoned, you know, for commercial or industrial type use. So we've got some language built in, uh, that would be considered like a minimum easing of standards, that would be more administratively reviewed, and then a process that would involve a similar, a conditional use permit, that would be more of a significant change, but with a, with a cap of, um, maybe two to three years, allow for extension requests. But the goal with the significant easing of the requirements would be that there would be a transition plan to move from a home base, because again, home businesses are, uh, limited impact to an area, these are permitted in residential zone areas, they're also permitted in rural areas. So, to meet, if you meet our current requirements, your neighbors probably will not know if you're operating a business. So, um, you know, we're working through two different scenarios that provide flexibility to business owners.
Where does the impetus to work through those scenarios come from? Because I, I guess my feeling on this is that when you own a home business, uh, we've got some pretty clear standards to not impact the neighborhood. So, if you grow to a certain point, it's time to move, period, and now that's, so where does the impetus come from, from all of us to go through a lot of transition, um, rather than saying, yeah, it's time to move?
Yeah, there's nothing built in to allow a business to expand, you have to meet these.
Right.
Really rigid requirements, um, you know, you only get one employee other than whoever resides in the house. Uh, you get one building if you're in an district to store, uh, products related to your business, and you cannot have any outside of storage or display. So, we're, we're finding examples as we're reviewing these, cause there's, uh, annual reviews. And there's consistent issues with number of employees, uh, over storage, and then multiple buildings, and so.
But, so then there are compliance, right?
Right, compliance.
So maybe I'm doing transition differently than you're, than you're talking about? So, it's giving them time to move to another location as opposed to continue to grow or to stay long-term with that outside of their boundaries? Is that what we're?
Yeah, both, you know, um, stay where they're at, test what it is that they need to test for that three-year period or up to five-year period, this growth transition period, so that they, you know, if it works, great, they can launch to a different location that's zoned for their use, or they can go scale back and then the home business requirements.
Is that something that will come before us because it will be an ordinance?
Yes, it's.
Just for, Loris, I know you remember this, for anybody, uh, who's paying attention, the last couple of months, we've dealt with a company called Finco, right? Which, which is a good representation of everything that we're talking about here, and, uh, trying to figure out how to, so I use Hewlett Packard as the example, right? Hewlett Packard started in a guy's garage.
Most of the great businesses do.
Yeah, we, we want that, but there needs to be recognition that it's not appropriate for into the road with a certain level and stay in that road.
Right, right.
So, I look forward to hearing more.
It'll become, uh, so motor erosion control, it's, uh, there's been several variations of that, we've been working with the development community, the environmental, uh, community, we're waiting on the outcome of the watershed work group to see, you know, what the results of that is, uh, but this is something definitely that will be before planning and zoning commission.
And it hasn't gone to planning and zoning yet, this is, this is entirely staff at this point?
We probably had some discussions. About it, but no action before planning and zoning commission.
And I saw the list of, of, uh, people involved in the industry that you're trying to get input from, it looks like a really.
If there's more, there's, no, I think there's about thirty, so.
Thank you.
Complaints, I won't go through all of them, um, different issues, um, one involving noise with Marburya, a property owner to the northwest, a couple of accessory structures being constructed without permits in the Fernald area, grading, erosion control complaint in the, um, Iowa Center area, the Pickard Grove Home Park, that citation will be, uh, before the courts, November ninth is the date.
Is that where they have too many units? Is that?
Right, yeah. Navy subdivision north of Nevada, concerns from property owners with regard to the drive. Subdivision owner did make some improvements to the Hammerhead turnaround, it's apparently steep slope, and so he made some adjustments there, but there's some removal of trees, and we're gonna be working with property owners on that, these are things that were part of the approval. And then, again, a complaint involving a construction of a fence that's not completed yet, and they're gonna tell February, that's another Fernald complaint. Work program, the Orange Arrow represents things that we're working on, I talked to you a few times about the demolition site, um, we had two property owners that were interested, and then they changed their mind, so I think we need to come back to the board with some specific information, um, and maybe before we do that, try to reach out again to the property owners and see if there's interest, um, and, um, you know, it, you know, maybe it's a situation where the county acquires land that could be multi-use, multi-purpose, some of the counties that we talked to actually own the land that they use to bring the material, the debris, do the sorting and processing, um, or it's something that maybe we look at land in the county to rezone that would, that the private sector would take over. So those are probably the things that you're gonna see from us, but we, we will put something together, um, hopefully by the end, before the end of the year. The, let's see, the transportation impact ordinance is, um, before the planning and zoning commission came off for discussion, talked a little bit about Lisa, Emily's done a lot of work on making changes to our natural resource layer, we're reviewing it now as a staff, the focus has been the areas that are experiencing the most growth, so when we get applications in, we're, it's more consistent with what's actually occurring in the field, um, so.
Yeah, so you're, you're trying to get those lines more precise, I mean, it was kind of a, a general line that was drawn, and we're trying to get more.
More precise, yeah. And then, again, we mentioned the information on the subdivision roads that we're working on. Special projects, I mentioned the last time that I was here, that, um, we see the need to, um, improve our software capabilities, we think we need something that better, um, tracks our permitting process, our development permit process, our processes are very extensive from the time of application, so that it, to the time the application is approved, it involves multiple boards and commissions, we involve other cities, uh, so we wanna be able to track it better than we do currently, and we want to be able to extract information easily, more easily. All this stuff that's provided on this parkland is, it takes a lot of time, it's not an automatic process at all, um, so we wanna be able to pull the information more easily, we wanna be able to share the information with other departments, that's always been our goal, to work with environmental health, engineering, conservation, and the others, so that's, that's kind of a focus on this. And then to be able to have property owners and business owners apply for permits and be able to not only do that, but track the success, the process, you know, from the, you know, from their devices.
Are, are you talking about allowing them to actually make the initial, uh, application online?
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, and they, you know, they're pulling the information, um, the permits and whatnot, but it's, it's not as smooth as, as the process can be, or maybe should be. So we've talked to probably seven vendors and watched seven or eight different demos, and we wanna get to a point where we're built pretty strong about at least two of them before we sit down with IT and before I sit down with, um, with regard to this project. But this is something that we're probably gonna be requesting before the board for the next budget. And then it's, uh, National Planning, Planning Month.
Give us a proclamation.
It's a proclamation, we all have a proclamation next Tuesday, uh, but we'd like to have an open house, uh, for a couple, two or three hours, likely the third week of this month, uh, but we wanna, we wanna try to communicate with the general public, some of the ordinances that we've adopted, the amateurism, some of the others, and then some of the ones that we're working on now. And then use this as an opportunity to have property owners come in and talk to us about their projects, so we wanna, we wanna celebrate that, we wanna celebrate the, the volunteers, the commissioners, and everyone who's involved in planning and making the story coming to a great place to live.
Questions for Jerry, Loris?
I do, um, we had discussed, uh, over the summer, that there was a private individual who was gonna throw a party, a large rock concert type party, and you had said that you were communicating with him, and how does that even fit into our special events ordinance? How'd that come out?
Well, actually, the property owner did come in and inquired about the ordinance, and I went through the provisions, and ultimately, they decided that they would be underneath that threshold. Part of it is trying to figure out if you're gonna be more, if you're gonna have more than two hundred and fifty participants, volunteers, um, and, you know, I just suggested, you know, start with the bands, and, cause they, the bands have different social media accounts, find out how many people might be coming, um, but he, you know, I could tell he took it very seriously, he took all the information, and I think ultimately, he decided that it would be, that it would have less than two hundred and fifty people, and I have heard that there would be concerns or issues, I did report that, uh, to benefit of the sheriff's office and engineering and several other units.
I understand, that's it?
That's good.
Jerry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, here we are to public forum number two, this is our opportunity for members of the public to comment on anything you'd like to comment on, uh, we can't take any action at this point, since it's not on the agenda, but we might take action in the future under comments, if anybody has any, come on up. Seeing no one moving in microphones, liaison assignments, Loris?
Uh, I think the biggest thing that I recorded on last week that has now been at least, uh, temporarily resolved, was the situation with HERDA and the bus insurance for the bus, you will notice that the HERDA buses are on the road. So, um, we have obtained insurance, and we have a lengthy meeting on the morning of October eighth, we being the HERDA board, where we'll be discussing about how we need to change our contracts with the two contractors we have, to try and bring their drivers under our standards and requirements, cause that was the issue with the contract drivers. And, um, this week, I'll be in Collins for the open house for the wellness center they have there, plus in the meeting, and, um, uh, I think I'm going to make calls for them next Monday to talk to them a little bit about, uh, informations about the Prairie Road Trail, so there's a big things on there.
You also got Historical Society, which I think Marty and I won't be able to.
Yes, and I'm sorry, thank you for that, sorry, I'm a little under the weather with the food poisoning, so, thank you.
Absolutely, anything else?
Nothing.
All right, so, uh, so I was excited to learn right at the top of the meeting, and Loris, I think you, you pointed out that you think the number's seven percent, but, um, that, uh, wages in Story County are going up, and we're in fact the fastest in the state of Iowa in terms of, of increased, uh, wages, um, I, you know, I think it's silly to think that that's not a direct result of our low unemployment rate, but today we saw, we got ninety-five hundred individuals and growing in Story County who work in manufacturing at an average wage of about sixty thousand dollars a year, uh, and adding four hundred new jobs to that, I think is a really, really good thing and positive for Story County. Tomorrow, I'll be down in, in Des Moines, I'm, I'm leading a meeting with all of our regional, uh, mental health CEOs, um, and the County Sheriff's Association, as we talk through. mental health CEOs and the County Sheriff's Association, as we talk through, hopefully, those three groups, the Board of Supervisors from around the state, regional CEOs and the County Sheriff's Association, pulling together to really try to speak with the same voice to the state about what needs to happen as we get this, primarily funding issues and reliability of payments handled for our mental health system, but I'm excited to lead that conversation, and if there's nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn. And I'll second, all as a favor, say aye?
Aye.
You did, great.